...meeting of Santa Barbara City Planning Commission. Ms. Rodriguez, would you call the role?
Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Jacobs. Commissioner Bartlett.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge. Chair Justice.
Here.
Okay, getting into our preliminary matters. Our first item is review of Resolution Number 0-011-11 regarding 2409 Medcliff Drive and the draft minutes of June 2nd, as far as our meeting goes. Are there any revisions, changes, suggested additions to Resolution 011-11? Seeing none, let's move on to the draft minutes from June 2nd. Any changes, additions, or relations from that? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On page three of the minutes, under our discussion for item number three, which was the Habitat Project, it seems to me there were a lot of other areas of concern that the Commission addressed to get a thumbs up or down, since this was a concept review. And as I recall, there was at least majority support for the concept of the 50 percent bonus density, the lot area modification, and the parking modification, none of which seemed to be reflected in these minutes.
Okay, does anybody else in the Commission have any... concur with Mr. Bartlett? Thank you, Mr. Jordan. So we would want to reference those as additional numbered items as far as the commentary...
I would think so. There were four topics that the applicant had specifically requested feedback on, and that was the 50 percent bonus density, the parking modification, the modification on the separation between units, and then on the front setback. And I think we were in support of all except for the front setback portion.
That's correct.
So I think that that would be important to have in our minutes.
Okay. Our Secretary will make those modifications.
And then, actually, I do have one, just slight change, on the next item, which was item four, which was the Cottage Hospital update that I stepped down for. If my recusal could just be slightly reworded. It says Commissioner Bartlett recused himself due to his firm should be... firm being under contract with Cottage Hospital, not a contractor.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, any other changes or additions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve both our Resolution 011-11 and the minutes from June 2nd?
Mr. Chair, I'll be affirmative on the minutes, but I'll be abstaining from the resolution as I was not present that day.
Okay.
So moved on both?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And our Secretary will record the appropriate abstentions.
Yes, I had abstentions as well on the Cottage.
I figured that much. Okay, now, moving on. Mr. Cotto, are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or additions of exigent items?
No, there are not.
Okay, and how about announcements and appeals? Do you have any?
One announcement, I wanted to announce that the appeal, the neighbors' appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the Viverde Retirement Facility CUP Amendment at 900 Paredes Amigos was denied. The appeal was denied by the Council and the project... and the project's approval by the Planning Commission was upheld with some additional conditions.
Very good. Okay, at this point in time, I'm going to open up the public portion of our hearing to members of the public who wish to address the Commission on matters not on our agenda this afternoon. Seeing no one coming up and having no green slips in hand, I will close that portion of the meeting, and we will proceed to our first item regarding the application of Mr. Pete Aylin for a project located at 702 Laguna Street. Ms. Brodesson.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yes, I need to recuse myself on this item as I'm currently under contract with the Housing Authority on another project.
Okay. I'm sorry to miss you. Ms. Brodesson.
Good afternoon, Chair Justice and Commissioners. Kelly Brodesson, Assistant Planner with Community Development. The project before you this afternoon is a non-residential addition for the Housing Authority facility at 702 Laguna Street. Here I've shown a slide showing the vicinity map, and the project site is on the southeast corner of the intersection of Laguna and Ortega Streets. Let's see, it's between De La Guerra and Ortega Streets, and it's right across the street from the City Public Works yard. The proposed project consists of 7,118 square feet of one- and two-story non-residential The residential additions consist of 2,952 square feet of first-floor addition and 2,577 square feet of second-floor addition to the existing 990-square-foot storage building, which I'll call Building A, and 1,589 square feet of one-story addition to the existing maintenance building, which I'll call Building B. There's also approximately 2,000 cubic yards of grading, which will be 1,200 cubic yards of cut and 800 cubic yards of fill. Here's the site plan, and just to show you, this is Building A. This is the 990-square-foot storage building. And there will be two-story addition for this building, and then this is the approximately 4,100-square-foot maintenance building proposing a one-story addition. There is an existing 20-unit apartment building that was built sometime in the '70s, the Housing Authority facility. And then in 1992, the Housing Authority got... they got community priority designation to build 4,500 square feet of non-residential... of a non-residential building. And then in 1998, they came in and got a substantial performance determination to add 990 square feet for the storage building. Today, the applicant is requesting development plan approval for 7,118 square feet of non-residential additions, a transfer of existing development rights for 5,100 square feet of non-residential floor area, and a CUP amendment to allow the new office use and continued warehouse use in a residential zone. Here's a site photo showing the project site from Laguna Street. Here's a building... a photo showing the south side of the smaller building, the 990-square-foot storage building. Here's a section that will show you how the two-story addition will look in relation to the two-story apartment building adjacent to the site. Here's a photo of the maintenance building, which is the larger building of the two, the one-story building. And here is a... here's a picture for a slide showing the existing site plan. So you can see the site is fairly large. There's the apartment complex on the far left. Then you have the 990-square-foot building in the middle, which is where the two-story addition will go. And this is the larger maintenance building. And here's the proposed site plan. So the maintenance building will receive a one-story square foot addition in this area. And Building A, the one-story storage building, will receive a two-story addition in this In regards to parking statistics, the 20 apartments require 1.5 parking spots for each unit, so there's 30 spots for the apartments. Office is broken down at one spot for 250 square feet, so 8,271 square feet of office. We require 33 square... 33 parking spaces. For storage, 3,953 square feet is broken down at one space per 500 square feet, which is eight spaces. That totals to 71 parking spaces. However, for projects that have more than 10,000 square feet on the site, you get a 10 percent reduction. So that brings it down to 63 required spaces, and the applicant is proposing 63 spaces. In regards to Measure E, the total non-residential square footage for the project site is 12,364 square feet. When subtracting the community priority designation square footage for 256, and you also subtract a 3,000 square feet for the minor and small additions, the remaining square footage that the Housing Authority still needs is 5,108 square feet. And they were able to do that by using what's called the transfer of existing development rights. And they have a sending site at 416 and 420 East Cota Street, where there was, I think it's about 20,000 square feet of commercial square footage that was demolished to make way for apartments. Let's see, the project is found to be consistent with the zoning ordinance and the general plan in regards to setbacks, parking, building height. And it's also found to be consistent with the general plan. This is in the Laguna neighborhood of the city of Santa Barbara, and it's mostly zoned C2. There are some residential areas, and it's surrounded by one- and two-story, single-family, duplex, and multi-residential buildings, and also the Public Works building is across the street. The project was given a categorical exemption, and the Historic Landmarks reviewed the project and found it to be compatible with the surrounding buildings and with the neighborhood. In conclusion, staff recommends that you approve the CUP amendment, the transfer of existing development rights, and the development plan, making the findings outlined in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval. And that concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant is here to make a presentation as well.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson?
Chair Justice, members of the Commission, it's my pleasure to be here before you today and talk to you about a program that's really been in the works since 2002 for us. As any good organization, we want to make sure we have appropriate working space for both operations and maintenance of our program. In 2002, we commissioned this document from Schubin and Donaldson, which is an analysis of all of our office space needs. And a particular import is their opening comment, was that the Housing Authority offices are currently very crowded and lacking in file storage. It appears that the offices have grown, have been designed through a very reactive process in response to growth of the agency. As new programs have arisen and the client base has grown, the Housing Authority has made efforts to transform a finite amount of space into a productive working environment. The possibility of further growth will require the Housing Authority to either aggressively redesign its current floor plans or seek out new office space to provide needed workspace and storage. Since this report, we've continued to redefine our existing workspace to the point where we're now have commandeered an adjacent apartment for passive storage. We'd like to get that back into residential use. The one area where we've had growth is in the area of resident services. We know that we could never build enough affordable housing to meet demand in the community, so we have a very aggressive resident services department now that is focused on family self-sufficiency. We look forward to graduating our families from our assisted housing to make room for others on the waiting list. So that is the one area where we've seen probably our biggest growth. In this particular design, Schubin and Donaldson identified the addition to that storage space as one of four options, and in the current environment, it is the least costly of the options for us. We looked at adding office space to the Procedio Springs Senior Complex that is across the street from this proposed location, and that involved a fair amount of redesign of existing landscaping, the construction of a brand-new building from the ground up. So we think that this one is probably the most cost-effective, the least intrusive. It will provide us a better layout in terms of the office space that we'll relocate there. Our main office complex at 808-814 will then become our housing management and our resident services function, the real client-driven. This new space will take... will create office space for general administration, for the administrative staff, and finance. And we think that's the easiest to relocate, the least demand in terms of impacts on the existing operation at the 702 Laguna Street address, and we think it's the smartest way to go forward. I have the complete report on disk, but I don't think I need to go through that for you today in recognition of your time. I'd like just to defer to the architect and then take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Aylin.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for hearing the project. I'll be brief. I just... I brought some additional info so you guys can understand a little better what's going on. This is our existing site, and I've... the light blue is the commercial, and the darker blue is the residential use that's surrounding the parcel. And then this shows the new footprints on the existing site, just to give you an idea of how we are impacting the existing site. And then here's our new site. So you can see that the density of the project blends pretty well with the rest of the neighborhood. We were asked at the site visit who owns the properties around the parcel, and we were...
Sorry.
Go back. This is... we're not sure... this is a residential two-story. We're not sure who owns that.
It's a senior... it's a family subsidized project that we hope to buy one day.
It's almost a Housing Authority project. How's that? This is on the same parcel, so obviously it's Housing Authority and across the street. This is the Housing Authority. These are the city yards, one-story, one-story, two-story, two-stories. So our two-story portion for the project is back there. This is the first-floor plan. This shows... this is the existing storage building, and then we're adding a conference, a larger conference room for them to hold their board meetings, and new storage area, which is about one and a half times what was here originally. And upstairs shows, you know, the additional office space that we're providing, as Rob said. Please note that we got some decks all around here to step the massing, and I'll show that to you in a sec. So this is the building. This is looking at the conference room. Laguna Street is over here. So you can see how the massing steps up. So we address all the one-story across the way with a one-story portion, and then a two-story portion is toward the back where there are additional two-story elements. We are setting the building down a little bit in the back. That's where the grading comes from. Okay? And these are the other elevations. This is what you see from Laguna Street. This is very close, and it steps back up. And you saw this. This just shows that we're under the height of the adjacent buildings. Existing maintenance building, the new addition has office space and storage space. Staff asked us to park this as office in case this turned into office at some time, so we have... that's in our parking calculations. And these are the elevations. This is existing, so we're just matching what's there right now, pretty straightforward. And that's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I just... I want to comment that we're... it's our belief and our hope that should this go forward, this would solve the Housing Authority's administrative and maintenance needs for the next 50 years, as we, in fact, are probably overbuilding a little bit so that we have capacity for the future. Thank you.
Fifteen or fifty?
Fifty. Five-zero.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Are there any questions from members of the Commission? Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question, perhaps, for Ms. Brodesson. We just received another Exhibit A document. Is this a revised version of what we have in our packet that...
That is... Julie Rodriguez, the Planning Commission Secretary, caught that the formatting was off, so she simply fixed the formatting. So nothing's changed as far as content.
Okay, thank you. And thanks to Ms. Rodriguez for that as well. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, one question for Ms. Brodesson, and I'm pretty sure the answer's yes if the maps look right. But they're getting that 10 percent benefit on a lot that's over 10,000 square feet, but you're using the lot size including the apartments, correct? And so if you take the apartments out of the equation, is the 10,000-square-foot benefit still there for this project?
Yes, because Chair Justice and Commissioner Jordan... Yes, because the total non-residential square footage is, I believe, 12,000 square feet.
It looks that way, if you just look at the picture, too. And then for the Housing Authority...
Excuse me, one question.
Chair Justice, for a second, just to clarify, you get the break not because the lot size is more than 10,000 square feet, but because the amount of square footage of the non-residential developments is more than 10,000 square feet.
Okay, I must have heard that wrong earlier. And then for the Housing Authority, you briefly talked about trying to find some space across the street or adjacent. I'm just curious as to whether any attempts were to find other vacant facilities in town that met your needs that wouldn't involve construction, that you could just reuse.
We looked at that. The cost, because we already own the dirt here, is much more cost-effective for us to do this, and because we get capital money from the federal government, we figure to put that money to use and not have to pay for office space or buy something new would be the smartest move financially.
And then when I'm looking at the... I realize our maps aren't to scale by the time they're blown down, but on the existing site map compared to the next page that shows the parking plan, it actually looks like your parking spaces get closer to the apartments on the left, as I look at the map, than the parking spaces are now. Like you're grabbing back some of that apartment entryway or hardscape that goes into those apartments, is it...
Yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Jordan, this side actually stays the same, and this side here moves a couple of feet, so we can get some landscape.
So that line on the left, where the... that one right there, that line is in the same places where the existing cars butt in right now.
That's the intent. We have wide spaces here, so we have more of a larger turning radius, so we can tighten up the required dimension.
And then I'm curious as to... I think you're the guy to keep filling in questions that really quick. The... again, the existing map for the site plan and then the copy that shows the parking plan, is there a difference in the width of the parking spaces versus what's on the ground now and what you're proposing?
No, not on the existings.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Justice. I have a quick question about trash and recycling, since the... one of the buildings will be paint and maintenance materials. Are there accommodations for any special recycling or needs for solvents or other kinds of semi-hazardous waste?
Yeah. The paint storage building that exists right now is about here. We're just... we're moving it over to the other side, so it exists by itself in a contained location. It's designed... the materials that are in there are approved by the fire department, you know, to be in there with this type of construction. So it's not anything super hazardous or super... it's paint, you know? So they just want to keep it over there. And then our new trash enclosure is designed to be handicapped accessible, what's required now. And we did... you'll see on our cover sheet of our plans, we actually did the trash calculation, the recycling calculation that's required by the city. So we're not going above any... above and beyond that.
Okay, so the trash calculation is based on the non-residential use, and the residential continues its own pre-existing trash?
Yeah, residential is right here.
Yeah. Okay, good. And then I have a question probably for staff about the transfer of existing development rights. On page 10, number three, one of the findings we need to make for the T E D R is that the floor area of the proposed non-residential development... and then it goes on to give the formula. But the bottom line is that it does not exceed the maximum development allowed by the applicable zoning of the receiving site. And my question is, how is the applicable zoning of the receiving site calculated in this case? It's a 12-unit-per-acre site. How do you figure out what the maximum development allowed would be?
Chair Justice, Commissioner Jacobs, because it's a not... it's a residential zone that requires a CUP, there's... it's not as if it were, you know... normally this happens on commercial zones, right? So it's... so the answer to that question would be, you know, setback to setback, four stories or three stories, whatever the zoning height allows. In this case, because it's CUP, it's sort of whatever the Planning Commission decides is appropriate on the site. See what I mean?
Okay, so by this decision, we set basically a new standard of what's allowed on the site?
Correct.
Because it is residential with a CUP, and this is the point where we decide if it should be bigger than what it is.
Yes, correct.
Those are all my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to open up the public comment portion on this particular agenda item. Seeing no one coming forward, seeing no green slips, I will close the public portion and bring it to the Commission for an action. Who would like to start?
Comments?
Comments and... emotion. And it looks like Mr. Jordan is first to the switch here.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. And the only reason I'm out first is I only have one concern with what's being presented, and that's just the parking. It appeared when we were there for a site visit the other day that it was underparked. You had cars, I guess, tandem parked would be the way they were described in the lot. And you're suggesting that you reduce that by several more spots. Even so, I know it's a tough, difficult section of town for street parking also, and so I guess I'm just waiting to hear what the other concerns are and maybe some suggestions on how to resolve that concern without causing some type of another undue parking management program on an applicant. Otherwise, generally, I'm in favor of everything I've seen here and will support it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Aylin, you have some clarifying comments?
In quick response to that, the existing site, as it is right now, is substantially overparked. So we're using spaces that are there now but are not required spaces for the existing development, so that if that helps you understand how we're impacting...
No, no, it helps me understand. My observation the other morning was that you had cars doubling up in one spot.
In one spot, but there are other spaces that were...
Well, there might have been, but that tells me at some point those other spaces were also full, and somebody...
Maybe skip and answer that. I think it's more of an operations thing.
Okay, because I guess, you know, it's just an observation. When we were there the other day, in particular on the back right, on those slanted ones, I saw, you know, a couple people tandem there, and there might have been some empty ones, but that kind of tells me that you have some peak times when people come and go, and there's a lot of cars there at one time, and it just raised a red flag as to what happens when the lot is full. Where do people park, and how does that affect the other neighborhoods' parking preferences and what they can do?
Commissioner Jordan and Chair Justice, the project was actually designed for tandem parking. We encourage people to tandem park their personal vehicles, and it's primarily in the upper-left-hand corner. It was specifically designed that way so that if, in fact, we had any kind of impacts, we could utilize the tandem parking. Typically, what we do, we'll have people tandem park in the back, but then we will have an average of 15 parking spaces open in the front. When the Mental Health Association building was under construction, we lent, I believe, 13 parking spaces to the city so that the city that typically parked at the... I believe it's where they have the Solstice workshop. The city typically parked there. We gave them 13 parking spaces and had no impact to our operations.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'm regressing, Mr. Chair, because then it just brings up more questions for me, because if the design now on the ground encourages tandem parking and purportedly leaves vacant parking somewhere else on the lot, the design going forward due to reconfiguration and the squaring off of that section certainly isn't going to allow tandem parking. And if, you know, in all due respect, if whatever the situation really is on the ground, it will... if it's not good, but you say it's good, it will further worsen it. So I think that's just a concern, and I appreciate your response, and we'll see how the rest of the comments go. Thank you.
Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to be responsive to Commissioner Jordan's questions about parking. Ms. Brodesson, if you could put back up for us your parking slide from the PowerPoint presentation? Well, you actually have the metrics for it. Yeah, the... Mm-hmm. Okay. So, Mr. Semenski, I'm not sure if you're in the best position to comment on this. How does this square with your needs and whether, in your opinion, the property would be underparked, overparked, or just right, given your proposed plan?
I would say we still would have additional parking. We're not adding staff. If anything, we work to reduce our fleet. We encourage carpooling and so on. So I would say we would still have additional spaces with the 63 proposed.
Am I correct? When we were there for our site visit on Tuesday, there were quite a number of spaces that were open, and I believe you mentioned that that was typical for that day of the week and that time of day, is that -- which was, you know, first thing in the morning, 8 o'clock or so?
That's typical for any time. The only time it gets crowded is when the crew comes in and they park their cars on the site and our vehicles leave. But that's pretty typical, and it does not impact the parking to have that shuffling going on at the two times, you know, in the morning and in the evening.
Okay. Mr. Chair, then my brief comments would be that I am in support of the project. I have toured the current administrative building of the Housing Authority, and I can see that the quarters are quite tight and confining for the employees, and we know what that does to employee productivity and morale. So I'm very much in support of and think it's appropriate for the Housing Authority to expand the physical needs they have on another property that they currently own. And I think it's very forward-thinking of the Housing Authority to look at the next 50 years and anticipate what the needs are going to be and how you can continue to serve the city of Santa Barbara so admirably in what you do. And I think it's sensibly scaled. I think the construction hours and requirements are appropriate. We'll have to, you know, monitor that closely. When we were there, the very loud pile driving from one of your neighbor's construction sites was virtually deafening. We know how pile driving can be. But I think we just want to be sensitive to the fact that you're nestled into an otherwise residential community largely, and whether it's just Monday through Friday and/or possible activities on a weekend, as we've just reviewed with the cottage construction activities. We just want to be sensitive to that. So with that, I am in support of the project, and I'm looking forward to making the motion to approve this.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. Ms. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, too, am in support of this project, and I wanted to thank Mr. Pearson for looking 50 years in the future. You're going to look mighty old by then. And I think it's interesting that as we are talking about the parking, we're talking 50 years hence. I'm anticipating a lot fewer cars at that time, or entirely different mode of transportation. I could be wrong, but that's my anticipation. And so I don't have a problem with the parking as it's proposed. I would encourage you to plan into your project perhaps an electric charging station and other green or sustainable ideas that would reflect that interest that's 50 years into the future. I think that that will be something rather than retrofit if you plan for it now. I think that it would be a facilitator for employees and for, you know, for the people that would run out of battery on your property. So -- and bicycles. Lots planned for bikes. All right. Thank you, and I am completely in support of the project.
Thank you. I truly concur with Ms. Larson's comments. I think they're spot-on, particularly in terms of the charging station and other enhancements that are pretty straightforward. And this is a straightforward project. To me, it's a natural for this area. It's efficiency and both scale and scope for the Housing Authority. It's infill. It's low-profile. I see no reason to stand in the way of this in any way, shape, or form. So seeing no other lights on. Ms. Jacobs, no? Is there a motion? Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will move that the Planning Commission approve this project, making the findings outlined in Section Rumor numeral 7. And that can be found on Page 7 of the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit B. Excuse me. Exhibit A.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Larson. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries unanimously. This project is appealable to the City Council within 10 days. But from our standpoint, Ms. Pearson, you have a project. Okay. That brings us to our last item on our agenda, which is committee and liaison reports. And Ms. Larson, before you leave our presence, do you have a staff hearing officer report? Is there anything to report on that?
Today.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Justice. Just a reminder to the public that the airport opening is scheduled to take place this weekend. There is a ticketed-only event on Friday night, which is tomorrow, and the funds for that ticket price go to support the public art projects that are installed in the airport building. But the public is welcome on Sunday to tour the building, and I would encourage people to attend it because this will be the only time that everyone will be able to see the back-of-house operations of the airport. Having served on the steering committee for the airport design, many changes were made due to Homeland Security and other kinds of federally imposed rules. And so our airport looks the way it does in some cases because of the back-of-house requirements, and this is your chance to see your tax dollars at work.
Chair Justice? Good comments. Yes, Ms. Cato?
I heard yesterday that you have to go to the Fly SBA website and actually get a ticket for a specific time period.
Is that right, for Sunday?
For Sunday.
I think they are expecting a large turnout, so that might be new, that people should go to the website, flysba.com, and actually sign up for a time slot.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cato.
Thank you. With that, we've concluded our day's business, and we are adjourned.